Happy.
Happy. Thank you, Lucy. How you doing Renee? Doing all right?
Good.
All right. I guess those baseball games last softball games, the little girls game went till about eleven thirty last night. Those people that from Haight.
They have to go back and then I guess they have games tomorrow.
Where they playing at?
They're playing.
Oh, okay.
They got games tomorrow night on Friday and then.
Tonight too.
I don't know if they do tonight.
Well, my daughter's. My daughter's working it like, you know, she that the cheerleaders are working like the snack bar and stuff.
Okay. I know my granddaughter plays tomorrow night. They won last night. So it's a double elimination tournament, but there's just fourteen of us.
They do well, Marcy and.
And and Al Malher. And Mount Grand.
Win three games.
Win three games and get to next place.
Yeah, well. They.
I had melt out there playing.
Gee. Are we ready?
We're more.
We used to.
Okay, I. We were ready.
Hey, I have three o'clock, so we'll go ahead and call this a special meeting of the Green County Board Supervisors meeting to order. Uh, this board meeting is being sent out on YouTube. And first order of business is pledge allegiance and I've asked Ron Campbell to lead us to pledge. He's joining in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the honorable which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Thank you Supervisor Campbell. Next order of business will go to one B color. Anyone? Chair.
Yeah, there's someone here, County Sheriff. It's me. Just me. I'm I'm. Anyways, I turned it over to speak on the actual items for two A and two B. I wanted to make sure that I saw that. The other thing is just prior to the meeting, getting here, I'm just going to speak on those items. I just prior to the meeting, I just received a couple of emails that came in the last half hour or so. I was just here and make sure where are those emails and you have to see that. Um, about the fuel purchases at local fuel stations in the county. The county. And supporting local businesses. I brought this here to your attention before talking about that. Within the every office has for fuel related expenses. And particularly the sheriff's office. I asked to speak with you guys to leave Mr. Leonard, Chairman Leonard. And Mr. Peter, his office that day briefly, obviously hasn't been resolved based on this letter. If you haven't seen that letter, I'm sure you get a copy of that. But at this point, I'd like to plus that be put on the next one for next one, next meeting. Regular agenda. So we can actually have a discussion. Ask that forward. You're going to put it on the agenda. What we're discussing, Mr. Chairman, I appreciate that. Thank you for that. Goodbye, we're discussing Mr. Peter. Now the discussion, there's still no resolution on that. And now it's hard on local businesses and committing some cracks to paying. So I just want to make sure we can discuss this in public and all speaking business owners as well not coming to speak with you and letting our thoughts be heard from you instead of me expressing that. So. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else would like to address the board in color public? If not, we'll go to agenda item two A and presentation proposed twenty twenty-three, twenty-four Green County pending budget and Sheriff Sumner, you've asked to address the board on this.
Minister, Tim Sumner, you're really kind of sheriff, chairman, maybe the board of staff. I just want to look particularly for one at schedule E. And also, I think to prepare for dropping off back later, thank you, sir. Drop it off. Drop it off. That's your time. That's your time to look at it for schedule E. On the expenditures. Type the first page of the expenditures. You have the official county budget form, schedule E is a blank page. Well. Blank page said that. The next page is the schedule E, the start of it. Starts up on the top, the general funds, zero, zero, one, zero, zero, two, zero, and so forth. Uh, what I was looking at particularly, I just wanted to ask, and I maybe it's my fault. Maybe it's my fault. Not paying attention, not paying attention at some point during some of these meetings. Uh, I had two things I wanted to bring up. One was the zero, two, zero, so the fleet. Uh, that four hundred ninety-one thousand dollars, eight hundred sixty-three. And showing for the twenty twenty-four expenses, it's going up to nine hundred eleven thousand, four hundred eighty-six, which pretty high increase. So he is always looking at percentages and values and percentages and increases. Maybe I missed that somewhere along the way myself. I don't know if that's been fully discussed and I didn't quite catch that. A few, three gentlemen, fully understand the great increase there, maybe six percent increase for that one. Uh, maybe something that could be discussed here during this time unless you already very aware of any of your previous information. And I may have just missed that. The other one was the zero, one, five budget. I love that. Is there one five, so the information system? That budget goes from one million, two hundred twenty-four thousand, nine hundred eighty-five dollars. And it's dropping, uh, which we knew was going to drop. It was part of the whole process of this IT conversion and pushing things over to the offices and departments. It dropped to one million, one hundred twenty-seven thousand, six hundred eighty-four, which is ninety-seven thousand, three hundred and one dollars. It dropped less than a hundred thousand dollars. Uh, when when offices and departments are supposed to be taking this on early on, I've audited the idea of shifting these funds over to the offices and departments. As you know, I've said it several times on record and I still have. At this point, I will say, well, this is one of them. I wanted to have some more discussion on it and have you guys ask a little bit about this today because um, looking at the elected budgets and what we're getting for IT, again, I already presented last time, my budget is twenty thousand dollars for computer software. Um, or computer equipment. I mean, within the sheriff's office, totally unrealistic. I know you guys are very fiduciary wise and very fiduciary responsible. Um, you obviously know that's uh, I told you a hundred percent unrealistic. So, uh, at this point, you know, continue to move forward and have that budget being set at twenty thousand dollars for computer equipment. Uh, you know, the computers and things that need to be replaced with the sheriff's office. They just don't know how to explain that to you. So I would like to see, um, you know, this is less than a hundred thousand dollars dropping IT, yet not a lot that's actually getting out to the offices and departments. Uh, my budget for IT is exact same as, uh, for several, for instance. So anyways, those two things all I want to address real quick and ask you. Thanks for your time. Thank you. Enjoy your presentation.
Okay, don't be, uh. Mr. Peter?
Yes. Let's see if, uh. Let me address while I get this pulled up here. Uh, the issue on the fleet, we did talk about that in our last budget work session. Um, we moved the purchase of several cars to a cash purchase opposed to a lease purchase. And we put that in the budget. So pretty much all of the passenger vehicles that we anticipate purchasing this year, with the exception of four additional police package vehicles, they will all be purchased with cash. Now, our arrangement with enterprise is such that those will be leased through enterprise. Uh, on the other hand, should a more competitive bid come, you know, if if the industry can meet our needs, we may go out to bid and and then we will arrange either to pay cash or other financing. But that that huge jump accounts for those passenger vehicles that we budgeted for. I'll address the IT budget in the course of my presentation. I hope this means that we're all good to go. And let me pull it up here. I love how this covers up my little button that says. There we go. There we go. Well. The budget, we'll talk a little bit first about what principles we built the budget on. Uh, these were developed through the budget work sessions as well as some ongoing budget priorities that have been established over the years. Um, we'll talk about some of the particulars of the some parts of the budget, some savings we've realized, some what we're going to do with some of that savings, some of the one-time money and so forth. To begin with, um. The process requires that a summary of of the budget be published so that people can see it. It'll be left here in our office as well as in the libraries. It'll also be online. We'll have that published online and we are required to publish it in the newspaper. One of the reasons that we moved this up about a week is so that we can send this to the newspaper tomorrow and get it published without concern. As I indicated before, the last couple of years, they've wanted to have our budget before we passed it. Um, and and that you obviously can't do. We can tell them how many pages it would be. We can tell them how much space. But they wanted to to do the layout and and we can't do that. So um, the other thing that requires that if you're going to exceed the truth and taxation rate, that has to be out there for the public to know. There has to be a public meeting so they can come and talk about that TNT rate at at the adoption final budget. Um, spoiler alert, we're not exceeding the TNT rate on any of our our property tax rates, so that won't be an issue. Um. On the guidance principles, I've got little things, you know, get rid of that. I've got a little red box here on my screen. This, this, uh. Okay. Let's go here. Thank you. So if if, um, as we know, we've our budget has had an influx of one-time money for the last couple of years. Some of it came in when we expected it to. Some of it came in later than we expected it to. You recall that, um, we received the first tranche, if you will, of LA CTF, PCF money after we'd adopted a budget and it came in September at the end of the federal fiscal year. We didn't know how much that was going to be until about end of August, when we found out Arizona was treated well on that, but we didn't know. So we budgeted only part of that amount, that money came in. And and we had this bubble of, I mean, or excuse me, of funds that we had not budgeted for, so we didn't know how much. We also have some ARPA funds still remaining. And then we have some savings, um, based on some decisions we'll talk about later, where we've been able to to save quite a bit of money. And so the budgeting principles here is take that one-time money and use it for one-time projects. We've we've had that thing for a couple of years now, but the idea is if we can, if we can build some things that we need, make some repairs. Uh, and that will show up in the capital improvement plan later in the presentation. We do not anticipate any additional federal COVID-related funding. There is some funding out there under the bipartisan infrastructure bill that has not been distributed. Some of it, um, on the federal end, they aren't ready to distribute it. Some on the state end, we're not ready to receive it. The big package that we're we're concerned there is broadband. Now, there may be some other infrastructure stuff that's out there. We are not dependent on that money for our infrastructure bills. But broadband, we've been looking for partnerships, um, primarily with Valley Telecom, but we'll work with anybody who can, who can give the funders a plan to help get broadband out. Now, the county itself, we have broadband. And Bits has has looked at those contracts and has suggested several changes, working with, uh, Valley Telecom, where we may be able to save money on what we're paying and increase our our speed. So that the county's taking care of it. Our concern is constituents. And there are pockets where where broadband is out in the county and there there are other pockets where it's not. So if we can tap into some of the infrastructure bill, uh, money or other broadband sources to build that out, we are actively looking for those partnerships. And we've built some some capacity into this budget as we have in the last two to where if those grants come, we have the capacity to spend them. Um. Our capital projects, we're still looking and and we will continue to look for projects with lasting value that have a cost benefit ratio that is positive. What I've been impressed with is this board is not simply we have money, let's spend it. Let's take, go back a week where we were halfway into a a well drilling operation and we need to go further. The board had a lot of seventy-five thousand dollars, but you didn't approve that much to keep digging on the well. Fortunately, we found water. Um, but but we could have simply said, I'll spend until that seventy-five is gone. We didn't need to. And that's that's a nod to this board's continuous fiscal conservative approach to budgeting. Um, one of the things that we've noticed both internally and externally is a misunderstanding of what expenditure limits mean. Fiscal year twenty-three, the one we're just ready to finish up, was our artificially low expenditure limitation. That was a result of slow census numbers. And it was in the thirteen and a half million dollar range. Fortunately, because of some federal influx of money and a one-time, um, payment from FMI to make up for electricity taxation charge, we're okay on that. But fortunately for FY twenty-four, our expenditure limit will be in the twenty-seven million mark. The the misunderstanding is that if you have credit card ability to pay, you can spend whatever you want. And and that's that's something not the case. So we will focus as we move forward with suspension limitation change and really not a an obstacle that it has been. We'll focus to revenue and we'll focus on budget capacity and simply making sound decisions. Um, a phrase I remember one of my children, they they were at a at a college orientation. They were given this advice counts. Just because you can doesn't mean you should. And and that's where we'll move forward in our budgeting. Um. We have done some things that that have been helpful in terms of recruitment retention. This budget builds on that theme. Um. The suggestions that were made to try and retain, um, sheriff's deputies were not a result of any deal at the legislature. There was money that was provided by the legislature, recall, almost at this exact time last year. There was a big dump of money, fifty million dollars statewide, and we came up with a plan with the sheriff about how that recruitment retention money would be distributed over a period of time. And we're in the middle of executing that. We received some reimbursement checks from Department Administration. Some of that reimbursement will come until the end of fiscal year twenty-four. But we had planned in the budget for that, may work with the sheriff, do some shift changing and then address those, um, those areas and hopefully will bring some stability to that department. One of the challenges in law enforcement today is that there simply aren't enough law enforcement officers who want to work the profession. And that's for a variety of reasons. CSA, which you of course belong to, is working hand in glove with uh, all three universities as well as the Department Administration to look into how we find young people who want to get into this profession. It's a great profession. But with a lot of the negativity around the profession the last three or four years. Um, and frankly, the scrutiny that comes with everything they do, uh, threats against, uh, personal liability. It has not had the lust that it used to have. But in terms of our ability to to recruit locally among competing agencies, we're at the top of the heap. We have continued, we have, we're hopefully will receive very soon the leased vehicles we ordered a year ago uh, on law enforcement. We've booked for four more for the coming fiscal year of twenty-four. Um, we've turned to that because of availability. We simply could not get our hands on cars, particularly law enforcement vehicles and especially cars. We tried to buy an ambulance over a year ago and couldn't get one. It should be starting to be built in July. Um. But as we move forward, as supply chain issues tend to ease, we will be looking to see whether or not leasing, which has with it a transaction cost as well as an interest cost with it, uh, whether that makes sense or whether going back to a more traditional purchasing methods make the more sense. Um, if if vendors can get us those cars, whether they be law enforcement vehicles or otherwise, and and by the way, we have some other vehicles that are not law enforcement, but we've also gone through enterprise to get because they could get them. Um, but as things begin to ease, we'll move back to a more traditional, at least we will compare the traditional method, but the lease purchase method. As as I talked about earlier, and and I guess this point really addresses it, but there is a dramatic increase in the fleet budget, but it all is because our expenditure limit allows us to purchase some things where we have been purchasing on time. We cannot purchase those with cash cars in particular. Um. And over time, that's where we move where we can. Now, there are times it makes sense to buy something on time. Some of our relationships with, uh, Empire Caterpillar make sense. The trade-in, the maintenance, the the way we manage that contract, we may continue to still um, lease or or buy those on time because it's worked well for us. Um, we will compare that, of course, as we go forward as interest rates continue to rise and see if that continues to make sense. Over time, we're better off if we've got cash to pay for it as we go rather than being on time. Let's talk about wages. Last year, we, along with several other counties, not all of them, but several, employed a a different approach to wages that, um, focused on the the bottom wagers in the county. And it was a combination of a two percent increase, but plus a dollar fifteen an hour raise. It resulted in roughly ten percent increase to those at the the bottom end of our wage scale and a little less than three percent to those at the top. But what it did was help address the inflation rate that was running at eight percent. It was actually the time we adopted higher than eight percent. It was in the the Arizona market, it was a little over nine at this time. By the time they measured for minimum wage purposes, it was at eight percent in August. But but it kept those who are most vulnerable to inflation increases. It kept them safe. They didn't lose buying power with the way that the board adopted. Additionally, we did some targeted market increases for sheriff's office employees to help bring them up and and try and try and bring some stability to that department. This year, the budget includes the proposed five percent, uh, wage increase across the board. There's additional some targeted market things to try and be competitive. Um, inflation as of earlier this week or late last week was announced at four percent. The the Federal Reserve intends to bring that down two percent and they will continue, they they've signaled they will continue to interest rate hikes to get there. That will slow an economy down. Uh, we know what it's done to housing. Uh, you simply can't get as much house for the same same price as you used to. Um. The wage recommendations have been trying to stay ahead of inflation, but also to stay and keep key personnel here. And in doing so, Mr. Adams has done a very good job of of finding the relevant markets to compare against and see what does it cost us to get where we need to be. Um. The wage, the wage reviews will continue. There there are some, you've heard at the last meeting that there are some who feel like they didn't left. We'll continue to make those, uh, I say make we Mr. Adams, continue to make those comparisons, try and find relevant comparisons and and address some more of those as we go forward. A little bit by way of history, CSA had had pulled the counties for the period of time between fiscal year eighteen and twenty-two, that was a five-year period. Um, during that time, Green County had a total increase in wages of eighteen point three percent. Um, some counties divided their increases between merit and cost of living. Most do. And so you'd see one percent cost of living, two percent merit. So not all of those employees got all of those merit things. Some cases, most cases reversed, two percent cost of living, one percent merit, something like that. Um, but I added up all of the possible increases that that were available throughout the counties and the the next nearest county to Green County in that same five-year period was Maricopa County with a fifteen point five percent increase. And some of that was merit. So some employees didn't actually realize that. When you compare to the small counties during that same period, it was about Apache County, the highest at a ten percent. Again, theirs was also split in one year for merit and cost of living. And the other year that they gave, other two years, it was all cost of living. So in terms of of being wage competitive with those with whom we compare, this board has been very generous. Um, that doesn't mean to suggest that prices, the grocery stores aren't aren't still high. The cost of housing in Green County isn't still high. We understand that. But relative to those other small counties, this board has been been very generous. You'll see on that last bullet point with this year's five percent. Over the last seven-year period, some employees have received as much as thirty-three percent increase in seven years. At the upper end of the scale, it's been as much as twenty-six and a half percent, twenty-six point three over the seven years. Making a rough average, and I say rough because it's not a weighted average, but it's the average of four point two six percent per year over a seven-year period. Now, spoiler alert again, we probably can't keep up with this. The economy is slowing. Um, some are predicting a recession at the end of this year, early next year. Now, I said the same thing a year ago. And and such it is with economists. They're always right because they're never quite accurate. Um, but nevertheless, we want to watch very carefully as we've made these adjustments and follow closely to the actual um, cost of inflation, which we've we've done and and we've kept that up. The question of sustainability, we've met in this budget, both that we can meet these wages, but also that we can keep key personnel. But I I do think it's important to to take a step back and recognize that this board has done all that it can and look better than anyone else of trying to take care of our employee workforce. Of discussing the the IT shift, the sheriff is correct. This is not a dollar-for-dollar shift of what went out of IT and into the other departments. We have kept a fair amount. Part of that is because we know we're going to miss. We know that that department may say we need three computers and then their their printer goes out or a copy machine goes out. So we've kept some in reserve. Um, with the sheriff in particular, we never got the the detail that we need, the the number of, um, computers that were there in the department, how many needing to be replaced department-wide. We didn't get a a list of software. So we've kept some in IT so we can meet those needs. It's certainly not to shortchange any, uh, officer department, but rather so that we have enough there to make some significant purchases that will benefit the entire county, but also to make sure that as we go forward and we fine tune this process that we're not left saying you can't have a computer because you really need one, but we don't have any. Um. Talking about our PSPRS debt. So we've been able to save a significant amount of money in one area. We're about to realize another significant savings because of our our cash conscious approach to our debt with PSPRS. Um, last year, again, not knowing how much money might come in, we budgeted five hundred thousand dollars uh, in that account, the PSPRS unfunded liability account. And then we budgeted seven hundred fifty out of the LA TCF funds, not knowing how much we come. We made then the adjustment two weeks ago. It was two weeks ago, maybe it's last week, to shift out of our capital improvement fund and to pay down all of the unfunded liability as of June thirtieth last year. So as we've discussed several times over the years, the one once a year measures taken on June thirtieth. Now, they don't actually, that's where they freeze the books. By the time they actually get the calculations done, we're into late October, November, we'll find out what that is. But the latest figure we had, one point nine two five million and change. Um. There's a a term called the ARC. It's called the annual required contribution. Later today, we'll present on a PSPRS funding policy, which we're required to have, that spreads these payments out over a period of twenty to thirty years. Um, in such a a model, there's quite a bit of variation year to year in how the markets do. Um, it can even change. For example, if if we were to hire a lateral lateral hire who's late in their career, then our liability for that employee goes up with requisite number of years they have, as opposed to hiring somebody brand new out of the academy who falls into a different, uh, pension system and is a lower-cost employee. But there are lots of factors that can can roll into that. But the market has been part of the biggest, um, contributor to that. Now, last year, we budgeted only thirty thousand, uh, to to in twenty-two, not last year, in twenty-two. And so we did not make a significant, uh, contribution. And as a result, I'm not sure it's on this slide or the next one. Um. Nope, it's either there. I left it out. Either way, our our unfunded liability went up by about, um, not quite a million dollars, little less than a million dollars. Um, primarily due to market conditions over the last year. This year, we we paid it down to the known balance zero. Uh, I say known balance because at June thirtieth, on Friday, they'll they'll freeze the books. They'll start doing their calculations and we'll know. As a result, we budgeted fifty thousand dollars to try and, you know, in case there's still some discrepancy. But at this point, uh, unless we have significant market withdrawal, we should have, uh, we should be in good shape. Our, um, we're going too too fast. Our fiscal year twenty-five, um, because they measure at the end of the year, we have already, we've already, uh, been given a contribution rate for fiscal year twenty-four. So we won't realize the savings for another year of the payoff. So our. So our contribution rate for the current year is thirty point three two percent. Last year it was thirty percent. So it's it's raised ever so slightly by FY twenty-five is when we begin to see this significant drops. Now let's move on. Out of county tuition. We were asked a couple of meetings ago what that has done for us. This year alone, we saved about one point four million dollars based on that formula. Some of that is because the legislature has kept a a three hundred eighty-three thousand dollar subsidy in the baseline budget. We've never asked for it. In the soft inquiries we've made, nobody seems to be worried or concerned about it. As a matter of integrity, we're certainly going to make sure they understand this was not something we requested. This wasn't the deal we struck. But but because of that, we have saved over the the two-year period of last year and this year about two and a half million dollars in money we would have spent. Now, we were getting a subsidy before, so that would have cut in that two and a half million, but actual raw savings, we're in about a million and a half dollar range over a two-year period. Our cost this year will be about a hundred and seventy-three thousand dollars after the subsidy has been accounted for. Right now at EA, there is an enrollment boom. There's more people at EA that enrolling than there are in most community colleges. And as a result, our kids as well are going down there. That will increase that bill. That may change, but the economy, community colleges seem to have an inverse relationship with how well the economy is doing. When it gets better, people leave community college and go get a job. Inflation is backing off, but so are revenues as we've talked for the last two meetings. So it behooves the board to continue to take a conservative approach to budgeting. And and we'll talk about this in our unfunded balance policy is as why that makes sense, how we can react if things begin to go negative as well. But it it certainly screams, we need to continue to be conservative. This board has always taken a conservative approach to budgeting. We have looked carefully at what we expect for revenues to come in, and we scrutinize across the board expenses. And and when we separate, we've got extra money, we separate from that which is absolutely necessary and that which is one time what we can do this year, maybe not next year. Because of that, we've been able to notice those captions. Now I'm self-conscious. But nevertheless, we'll continue taking a conservative approach. We'll continue and actually double down, so to speak, on our conserving the one-time money we have. We've built into this budget, as you've seen in the budget worksheet on Schedule A, a two-million-dollar placeholder for future capital projects. That's money that is not in our regular budget, but that we can hang on to. We can budget it next year. If we if we finally have to hit it this year, we can make some budget maneuvers, maneuvers. Basically, the kind of transfers we've made to pay off our PSPRS debt, we can use it. But the idea is, we know we can't, we can't use all of this money wisely in one fiscal year. As we talk about the capital improvement plan, you'll see that there's a plan. And this will hold some of that money in reserve so that as those other projects become mature and ready to go forward, we'll have money to do something with it. That capital improvement plan incorporates money from ARPA, from LATCF, and some of the reserve money is from those funds as well, as well as some of the realized savings. Again, we need to continue taking server approach. Talk about some of the particulars of the budget. You'll see that the general fund spending is down slightly. Ever so slightly, a hundred and sixty thousand dollars, but we budgeted seventeen point nine million dollars of expenses. Last year, we're at eighteen point one. So that reflects the moving of of capital funds into a permanent fund. And some of that simply reflects some some lower spending such as out of county tuition. Our primary tax rate, again, at the TNT rate is eight point one one eight. This is a calculation that comes from Arizona Department of Revenue and particularly Property Tax Oversight Committee. They set the the TNT rate, but we have not exceeded that rate in many, many years and have only once or twice exceeded that rate ever. In this case, the actual dollar will go up eleven point eight three percent to about eight cents on the hundred dollars. The NAB, which the net assessed value has decreased somewhat dramatically. I'll show that on the next slide, I believe it is. But we've we've lost about forty-five million dollars in net assessed value. This board, better than any other one I know, because our economy is such that it's it's a one primary economic contributor. We see the exact inverse relationship between property tax and net assessed value. In other counties where you have a bit of a diverse economy, it's hard to see exactly where the change is. They have the same dynamic. You just got hundreds of businesses instead of one. The entire total budget, which is both the general fund as well as all special revenue funds, is up a little bit. About one point four. We have close to a million dollars, a little bit more than a million dollars, we expect to realize in federal grants for the airport. We also have a temporary increase in landfill tipping fees due to the Clifton Soils project where they're cleaning up every slots. So that increase reflects some of those additional revenues. Now, we have not booked to and budgeted to spend all the special revenues that we'll get. There are some funds that have a significant cash balance and it won't be needed this year. And so we booked that which is necessary. The combined tax rate will increase a whopping, what is that, one point one three percent? That's that's with our county flood control district as well as our public health services district, as well as our county general fund. Now, as I've indicated before, I know our Steve Peru, who grew up here and still kind of cleans up his home. He'll brag about having the lowest primary property tax rate, but they've got, I think, five special districts. By the time it all said and done, they're way ahead of us. They don't even come in second. But we've not, we've not seen all of the different counties postings yet because they're not all, we're actually a week or two ahead of many of them. But by the final budget, we'll have a comparison. And I suspect we will come in again as the low-cost leader on overall property taxes. The primary property tax does not exceed the TNT rate, nor do either of our secondary property taxes. So here's where where we're talking about the the ten-year history of the net assessed value. And you'll see that this year is, there's only been four years in the last ten for the net assessed value has been lower than it is for fiscal year twenty-four. Of course, in twenty twenty-one, they had hit the zenith at five hundred fifteen million. So we are off, like I say, about forty-five million year over year from last year, and that will reflect in the tax rate. Or for good measure, it also whereas ninety-plus percent of our net assessed value is with the single taxpayer, so goes the tax bills, ninety-plus percent, probably ninety-five percent in that neighborhood of the tax bill goes to a single taxpayer as well. Here's our history of tax rates. The eight point one one eight is the highest we've ever had. It is, like I say, pennies above where we were last year. Again, with with the single taxpayer paying most of it, that's where most of the impact will hit. Again, here's our combined tax rates. Let's talk about our county capital improvement plan. As as you're aware, the idea is that we can set aside some money to try and do significant projects that aren't paid for on a day-to-day basis. We've changed this year. It's it's been received possibly in our departments. Yes, I hope been received positively by you. But the idea is that we want to actually take this document that allows us to reserve some money and actually put it to use to to prioritize and target what we're doing while still giving the board an opportunity to evaluate the long-term value of these investments. It's a little easier when we've got some federal money in our system that we can fund some of these things. But the truth of the matter is, this is a planning document that we should be using all the time. There will be years when our capital budget will be very, very lean. It it's going to happen. You've all lived long enough. We've all seen where economies go up, they go down. There may be years when we are not able to invest anything in our capital improvements. Last year, we did not make any significant capital improvements at the beginning of the year because we didn't know exactly how the year would play out in terms of federal funding, the electricity issue that hit us in November, and that was our low-expansion year. As we talk about their definitions, these are, these are typically projects that are over a hundred thousand dollars or have significant lifespan, a five-year lifespan. They may be combined. One of the projects, I think, is our our tier two is doing some improvements around courthouse. Painting, doing some lighting, those can be grouped together. And you'll see that there are a few projects that are under the hundred thousand dollars, but they anticipate to have a a five-year or longer lifespan. Types of, you know, examples of what could be there is land acquisition, buildings, or either significant remodels or building a new building, those types of things, and studies to find out what we should do. Sorry, this one turned up so small. But essentially, the the CIP reflects a planning process that is ongoing. We adopt it every year, but it's supposed to have about a five-year horizon as we look at these things. Some of the items on tier three have been there for a very, very long time. And I don't think it's wise to necessarily remove them off because we haven't addressed them because the the need may come that we do need to address those those things.
Derek, if I may interrupt it, in reviewing this, I would like to move one project that we have as a tier three project and move it into a tier two. And because I think the safety and 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 it's it's the number two, the fair ground exhibit building floor.
You just ahead of me, Mr. Chairman. Obviously, we've talked about priority systems, tier one of those things we actually intend to complete or substantially complete in fiscal year twenty-four. Tier two would be those projects we intend to come to address in twenty-five or or twenty-six, but for which we can start planning both financially as well as logistically, if there's engineering and so forth. Tier three are those things where, at this point, they're more aspirational than practical, but we don't want to lose sight of them either. The third floor of this building's been around almost since the second floor was built. But and we don't have a need for that yet, but the day may come when we do. So we don't want to use our side of those things. Proposed tier one, and and you have this going, it's different on this, is that green line. So we can distinguish these charts, tier one from tier two to tier three. Number eighteen, and you remember, we had at one point as many as twenty-five projects on this. We pared that down. Some of the projects have have been somewhat completed. Other of the projects were more of a maintenance than a capital improvement. And then one, the last one, the medical record software, I've been in conversation with Matt Bollinger. This would be a long-term investment. It's relatively cheap. But that may come off because they haven't been able to find a program that they feel like would improve their efficiency. But it's on tier one. We have ARPA money set aside to pay for that. If that doesn't go through, then we can reassign the ARPA money to a different project. Tier two projects. And I can't read these. Essentially, acquiring land for housing, that's an ongoing initiative. We've talked about several approaches. Our best, our best options right now may be to to look at some state land. Let me go back to tier one real quick. On that tier one, there is a well, Loma Linda landfill at the park at Loma Linda. That well has been drilled, and I I know the board is aware, for those who may not be, we drilled down to three hundred feet and and had somewhat of a trickle of water. The board approved to go down another two hundred feet roughly. We ended up going to five hundred twenty feet and then for the well that's producing a little over forty gallons a minute, which is pretty impressive, given that the wells next door at at Loma Linda don't produce that much. They're not as deep, but they don't produce that much as well. It does not produce as much as the wells in Bertie Lee. And they aren't quite as, it's not quite as deep. So we feel very fortunate that we found what we did at the depth we did and it can improve that. And nobody felt more excited about it than I because I had started before and I always spend up to my spending limit, but I I really worried about a dry hole. Fortunately, it is not a dry hole. In fact, the well driller told me and said, this is the cleanest water he's seen come out of the well in the entire area. It it was beautiful. So with that, they still need to put a pump on the well. We have some storage tanks. We will discuss in future whether or not we want to put some additional storage capacity, to possibly put a stand bike there. But that would be a, the the primary purpose is that part. And so you'll see on on two, tier two projects, one of the projects is to to put grass in that on that ball field. We've we've talked in the past about turf. We've talked about artificial turf. We may plant, but we we look at those things now that we know we've got the water to support it and not jeopardize the Loma Linda community by watering a ball field. You can see through the list. There's some fairgrounds upgrades. There's some courthouse improvements. By the way, they're working right now as we speak. One of the ARPA projects the board approved was the upgrade of the the sound and audiovisual system, the superior courtroom. That is taking place as we speak. The contractor's over there this week. Tier three projects, of course, and and on this is the one you mentioned, Chairman Lund. The floor at the, at the, we call it B building, the exhibit building, fairgrounds. It has been a problem for a long time. It tends to get wet and and that that causes consistency issues with the concrete. It also causes inconsistency with the paint. And so here in another month, three weeks, we'll start preparing for the fair. And one of the things they do is clean that floor up and make it as as safe and level as possible. But we can certainly, with the board's direction, move that from three to two and begin doing some planning on that.
If I could move to, I think it's we need to do something.
Then It's the fairgrounds exhibit building floor. Move it up to here. So if if you approve this capital improvement plan today as part of your overall budget, then consider that move from three to two. And and I will make that adjustment. I can't do it on the PowerPoint. It's not an active live document, but it will, it will move upon your direction as you directed. Talk about un- unassigned fund balance policy. This year, we've moved down a bit from four and a half to four. And that's primarily because we have some other other cash in the system that if things got really tight, we could use to get us through. This fund is not meant to completely replace a budget year. There's not that much money. We budgeted seventeen, almost eighteen million. We don't have that much, nor would we like to put that much into this fund. This fund is to help us get through to the next budget year where more significant adjustments can be made. So this represents roughly twenty-two percent of our general fund budget and would last us about two and two-thirds months if every other revenue source failed. If if we had no money at all, we could keep going for a little over two and a half. But the unfun, unassigned fund balance policy doesn't envision that. What it does, that once we hit certain criteria, which is a four hundred thousand dollar threshold revenue drop, we begin, the staff begins immediately to start looking and say, where can we save? The first place we're going to likely look at is vacancy. And is that, is that position critical to the continued operation of of the county? So that's where we first begin to adjust the budget. The next would be, we would say, where can we cut spending that is not necessary to the core functions of the county? Once those things have been done and the revenue continues to drop, then the board with, on motion, the board could then make adjustments to begin to tap into this to smooth the landing. It's not intended to be a a income replacement. It's intended to be a smoothing if we get to that. It is not in the general fund budget. It would only be able to be tapped into if the criteria that are in the the policy that you have in front of you are met. And so that's that's part of the the package that was, that we adopt every year is the unassigned fund balance. One of the things this does, this this is really in many respects not a rainy day fund in the true sense of the word. It's more of a stabilization fund. But having it there should cause a good couple of things. One, as the chairman often reminds us, is it sustainable? This helps us be sustainable, but sustainability is not This helps us be sustainable, but sustainability is not a function of having a few extra dollars at the bank, sustainability is. Making conservative approaches, finding ways to do things more efficiently, more cost effectively. If, if we can employ technology to be more effective and, and lower cost, then we need to be looking at that. Uh, we're constantly looking for ways to be more effective. Uh, one of the things we've built into the overall I T general fund budget is, um, the G P S. Program, the, the R G I S program that, that our assessor talked to us about. It can benefit that without even thinking about it, at least four or five departments and probably just about every department. That makes us more efficient. But likewise, if there are, you know, ineffective uses of our employees or, or hard assets, we need to be looking at that. Distinction between departments and offices, every county employee, as you'll see on the very last schedule, which is the G schedule. They work for some elected official. Um, that may be by way of a department that, that reports, uh, through the board's office to the board. Um, there's a similar setup, for example, one could, could liken it to the jail, it's a department of the sheriff's office. Um, but, but that jail and those jail employees work for an elected official. Same is true for your road employees, for your maintenance employees, uh, same is true for, um. Every employee who works for the county works for some elected official. Funding for some of those positions comes from a variety of places, it could become from federal or state grants, it could come to the state, uh, through the court system for some of those employees. We are fortunate inasmuch as we don't have. Our, our funding system for our probation, our courts is as clean as any county in the state. And there are lots of tension right now between the state and a lot of those counties. About probation, funding, probation officer raises, uh, court staff funding and so forth. Um, but every, every employee, every function that takes place in the county is tied to a, a function. That is tied to elected official responsibilities. Those responsibilities, whether they are mandatory or permissive, are set forth in statute. Some are required and some aren't permissive, you, you can do them if you, if that becomes priority. One of the things that is true in all budgeting circumstances, whether that's a personal budget or a public budget or a corporate budget. And that is, on the one side, you, you're doing your best to predict how much revenue is going to come in. In the private sector, that's profits and revenues. In ours, it's tax revenues. But the other is, a budget is a financial reflection of what's important to an organization. Some of those importance are given to us by mandates. There's some things we have to do, and so that becomes something that has to be funded. Everything else is the balance of importance. And, and so we, we can't very well say we're not going to fund the assessor's office. Because if we, if we don't fund that, there's, there's no property tax revenue coming in, same with the treasurer's office. We can't very well say, well, the assessment is important, but let's start off the treasurer. Or we don't collect our money. So, so in that regard, every department has its own important functions. Every office has its own important functions and this budget reflects that balancing that we worked through at the various budget work sessions. And policies you've said over the years. And so, um. With that, I certainly will understand for any question.
Derek, is there, is there a line item here for expected or anticipated, uh? You know, legal charges or whatever due to our upcoming litigation ongoing with basis?
Yes, we have two, um, one, the, the sheriff's office, um, uh. Professional services has been bumped up to a hundred thousand dollars, I frankly am not sure whether that's going to be sufficient. Uh, we are at about. Just under a hundred thousand dollars for both sides, um, on the litigation at this point. Combined so far, so far. Uh, I expect we're moving into a, a more expensive phase of litigation where depositions will be taken and, and motions we made trial court. And then thereafter, most likely appellate, um, procedures will take place after that as well. Um, on the other side, I pledged it actually, um. About three hundred thousand dollars for them all, what it's going to cost. And, and that will, i- if the sheriff's line item exceeds his, then it will be billed and will likely make a budget adjustment. Uh, to pay for that, um, so that we can fund this ongoing litigation, but I, I, we've been at this for about six months, we're at a hundred thousand. It would not surprise me if we're not at, at three hundred thousand by the end of, uh, one, this whole year. It, it could be more, uh, litigation like this is tremendously expensive. Thank you.
Any other questions, uh, you know, and. Yeah, I, 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 I look at percentages and stuff and, and, and you know. Considering one of some of the things we've done this year. Wages and, and the cost of the premiums going down, uh, I think. Part of the reason we're able to keep that percentage low is because of, of some of the previous years. Uh, things that we've done and come to, into roost and if, and, and it's benefited our budget by. Instead of being sucking money from the budget, they're, they, they're actually. I think, uh, the county tuition savings. I mean, and that will be year after year after year. And so I, uh, I, I think. Is. Additional things continue to go up. This board and, and staff will continue to look for ways to, to, to save money. And, and some of those things we've done and we're reaped in the benefits of that. I, so, uh. Does anyone have any questions?
I don't know, I think those will all ahead.
Okay, uh, we have, we can go to two B discussion, action, we've been counting board supervisors considered adoption of. This for year twenty twenty-three, twenty-four, been counting, attending but share to you that you'd like to address that to be.
Well, yes, sir, Tim Sundberg, the county sheriff. Chairman, members of the board and staff. A couple of things on the scheduled G. Uh, first of all, you know, I looked at, I've seen the whole budget, it looks very well put together, it looks, uh, uh. Pretty easy to follow and everything looks pretty good. Uh, like I said, I just had the issues with the I T I've already brought up and talked about, the other question was answered already with the, uh, fleet, makes sense there. Uh, on schedule G, it talks about contracts and the number of employees, I heard a moment ago, all employees are accounted for within this. I was just asking if, if bits, because that's outside employment contract, if that's part of those numbers and also like our health director, any others that are contract type workers. If that's part of those numbers, um, just out of curiosity, if that can be answered. Uh, the other thing, the P S P R S, uh, you know, very good job on that, because that's going to save a lot of money in the future, you know, you're after, you're after, like you said, and the college, you know, tuition. It's benefits bringing the county and the resident very, very direct, so you know, good job on that as well, those are things that are going to continually be benefits year after year, not just this one time, so. I think that's, those are, uh, great moves, great jobs on those things that I pointed out. The other, the last thing is, uh, as you go to vote on this and look at this. Uh, I would still, as you know, you just asked a question, Mr. Campbell, I didn't hear the, the full, full answer, um, as far as the line item there for the expenses for the. For the, uh, litigation stuff, but you know, even that is realistic numbers being set, you know, realistic numbers are being set for that, same as I T. I presented to you five hundred thousand dollars when I presented my budget to you, I said that could come down based on capital improvement type projects, I found out from Mr. Apier, it did go. Uh, needed to go down because capital improvement was picking up some of those costs, uh, spillman server and some other things, battery backup stuff, which made sense, and I said, perfect, if that's the case. Uh, we can go down to two hundred thousand then. Um, and when I was presenting my budget, I told you my first thought, when I first heard this concept and it first came to all elected officials, I thought maybe like eight hundred thousand maybe. But I brought it down and put it at five hundred when I presented it and said it may go down based on the capital improvement. Two hundred thousand dollars is what honestly is needed to run for the I T portion of the sheriff's office, again, it just doesn't make sense to set a budget knowing. Otherwise, what's the purpose of a line item budget? You guys are, you've set your own budgets, probably household, you set it for the county or in other boards, other things and. Schools and stuff like that, you know what budgets are and what they're meant to be, just like setting a realistic number for litigation. Realistic number needs to be set for the I T budget for the sheriff's office, saying twenty thousand dollars for computer equipment. That's going to be gone in July and we have to do our first purchase, I mean, right now I'm at twenty thousand computer equipment and sixty thousand for software. It's the exact same as the assessor, twenty thousand for computer equipment, sixty thousand for, uh, software. Exact same, look at the size of the offices, there's just no way it makes sense. I just can't understand anyone that would say, yes, that makes sense, it's reasonable set of budget, knowing that it's going to fail on that piece, and saying, well, there's contingency to cover it. This doesn't make sense, the, the, the budget needs to be set as realistic as possible, right? So Kate Gail told me a million years ago when I first started at offices, yes, Tim, the budget is there, but you try to make it set as much as possible to the line item it should be in. And not say, well, it's okay if we go way over here, because over here I got this money to cover it, and you start doing these shifts and things like that. Um, this whole concept of the I T shift over was told to us very clearly in this room, which I, I thanked Mr. Apier and, uh, Kim Kwame for. Uh, but again, that's totally unrealistic, I asked if you approve this budget, you'd approve it with making sure that, uh, uh, two hundred thousand dollars set for the I T. Specifically for the sheriff's office budget, right now it's, it's, uh, eighty thousand, which is definitely insufficient. So, uh, thank you for your time and consideration on that piece, that's all I have, other than that, I said everything, it looks good and well put together and the C I P, I really like that as well. The whole tier one, tier two, tier three and how it's laid out, uh, looks, looks great, and it looks great, I think it'll be a good, good move moving forward, so, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, uh. Does anyone have any questions? Would you like to address there the I T on that?
Certainly, it, it is diff, it's impossible to engage if I just am given a number. I think any two hundred thousand is not an I T budget. Um, we talked about this before, I asked, um, more than once for a list of what each department need. I asked them to engage with bits to come up with a list of what might be needed. The, the budget is not, uh, eighty thousand dollars, twenty for equipment, I will look at it here, but it is, um. It just say, I believe it's a hundred and thirty thousand dollars, that may not be accurate. But budget setting is an interactive process. It is one where we say, here's, here's what we're going to need, here's the employees, we saw a lot of that in the last couple of weeks. Uh, on employees and groups of employees that are similarly situated, but it is a necessity, an interactive process. And when simply a number is, is given, I need this much without any, anything behind it. That's not interactive, and so we do the best we can to estimate based on information of God. And yes, it will find tune, but hopefully in, in future years, that interactive process will become interactive.
I don't want to get into a, he said, they said, but, you know, go ahead and just one point.
The last I received was twenty thousand and sixty thousand, which was eighty thousand total, did that change? That's all I was asking, Saturday, a hundred and thirty right now versus eighty thousand, so. That's all I was asking for clarification on that, because that's a difference of numbers and discrepancy, not contentious. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, for letting me clarify.
Clarify that.
Yeah, I will.
Let, let him clarify that.
Yeah, it is one thirty.
One thirty. One thirty.
Schedule G is full time employees only.
Anyway, is there any further discussion on on the budget? Do?
Well, I yeah, a lot of work in this budget, and I know that that it's other team members, you know, other than yourself, but but you were the lead of that and putting this together, I know it's very difficult. There's a lot, lot to it.
Great job.
So, yeah.
I do, I do want to acknowledge particularly Renee, who's taken on a great deal of of this effort, and and when I was busy on other things, he something picked up. Austin was a big contributor, all of the staff in your office helped at various points, and so I I it it you made me responsible, but I would be dishonest if I didn't acknowledge the significant contributions of the rest of your staff.
Does anyone have any questions?
All right, with everything that has been said, thank you for a great job, and I so moved to adopt fiscal year twenty twenty-three twenty twenty-four, green town budget in the general fund amount of seventeen million nine hundred forty-seven thousand three hundred seventy-eight. And the total budget and the amount of thirty-four million five hundred and forty-five thousand three hundred and fifty-four dollars. This motion includes the budgets for the flood control district and the amount of five hundred and sixty-seven thousand eight hundred and eighty-nine dollars. The public health service district budget and the amount of two million six hundred and eighty-seven thousand two hundred and fifty-six dollars, the capital improvement plan in the unassigned fund balance policy and the public safety personnel retirement system pension funding policy. A public hearing to take comments from the public regarding this proposed budget will be held on July twenty-sixth. Twenty twenty-three.
Three, oops. Do not do it at eight AM.
At eight AM. At the motion second. Kevin discussed. Well, I would just, you know, I hope people realize how tough it is to clarify. And when you take from one other sufferer. And those that put this budget together worked extremely hard, along with our other elected officials and department heads. And I it it's sort of like being a referee, when you call something, half the crowd's mad and the other half's happy. And I feel that this board has worked extremely hard along with the staff. Make things as fair as possible, so everything fair, there's nothing fair in life, unfortunately. And but I I do believe that we have tried to do the best we could. Is it perfect? No, and we'll be do go through this process again next year. Hopefully we'll make it. If if things come up that that we find that are erroneous, we'll we'll try to fix them next year. But we we can't do everything all at once, and so I I too, along with my two colleagues appreciate all the hard work. And that includes the the other elected officials in the department, because you're part of this. And it it takes a lot of effort to do this and I think you've come up with a a good budget. I'm sure it is sustainable and and in the long run, that's important. And that's all I have to say. So with that, if anyone else has anything to say. All those in favor of the motion, will be the second?
Yeah.
Yeah, so.
I was a little late on it.
That's all right.
And I thought I was sleeping, I was correcting the three. Multitasking.
I have nothing else. Okay, so I will call for the vote, all those in favor of the budget, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. I did pass, motion passed. We'll now go to agenda item three. The German, and once again, thank you all, staff, all involved, and we appreciate it. Thank you, thank you.
You didn't, I was a little like I was your shot. I just saw, I'm waiting for that. When you had it. You don't beat it like you see guys know that.